Of course, thank you so much. So tonight, we are here in an update from the application team on the progress of the application. At the last planning board meeting, there was a a new aerial rendering that was proposed at the planning board that saw some favorable that that receives a favorable comments from the planning board. There was some talk about a fourth story. Since then, I've been working with town council, with the application team, the I know details. So I think the application team will have update on that element as we kind of progress forward. But I think tonight, the application team has a new street rendering and a new aerial rendering in some changes that have been made since the last time this project was back in front of the planning board, which is only two weeks ago. So with that said, I think it's appropriate to hand everything over to Mr. Joe Antonellis, the applicant, excuse me, the attorney for the application, into the attorney representing the applicant. And also, I would like to introduce Mr. Scott Richardson, who is the architect of the project. So without further ado, Mr. Joe Antonellis, can you please step forward and walk to plenty of all changes? And go from there.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Good evening to everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to come back tonight. When we were, before you last, we had some preliminary discussions regarding the addition of a fourth story to the buildings. And the board asked that the applicant provide some types of opinion regarding the addition of a fourth floor, a fourth story. And I did some review of the zoning by law to determine that, yes, a fourth story is a provision that can be obtained by way of a special permit or a relief that could be obtained by way of a special permit. I concluded that our special permit, as previously submitted, did not include that specific request. And that to the extent that the applicant wanted to move forward, the applicant would then most likely have had to amend the special permit, causing new publication, so on and so forth. And then I submitted a brief memo to Peter and not long afterwards, he was engaged with conversation with town council. And certainly, there seems to be some confusion within the bylaw or some conflict within the bylaws how one would get a fourth story when there are actual height limitations specifically in the in the downtown district. So with some reworking of floor plans and revisiting the project, the applicant presently is not going to seek any relief for a fourth story. We're going to deal with the building heights as we presently have them. And what we're going to show you tonight is a revised streetscape that will provide us with enough space to build one hundred and eighty eight residential units as opposed to the two hundred that we have been requesting throughout process. So there will be a reduction of twelve units. We have also provided a breakdown, as we were requested, regarding the location of and the number of one bedroom studios, two bedrooms, etc. Will it be located on the floors, etc.? And I'm going to leave that to Scott because obviously, his his fingers are all through the drawings and through the floor plans. And so I'm going to let him share his screen or have a screen shared so he can go over the unit counts with you. We're not going to do much more than that tonight. Again, we wanted to just, you know, reach back to the board because you asked about the unit counts. And and I guess right now, the fourth story is off the off the the table, so to speak. So that'll that'll limit the discussion there. I purposely told Craig that he need not be here tonight. I don't know that George has stayed on for any civil because really, we don't need to, I think, focus on that. And Rich had a conflict, so he's not here. So it's just Scott and I. I'm going to turn it over to Scott. He's got a drawing that I was very pleased to see. I'm going to take credit. I've given it a term. It's I thought it was a Duffield. And when you see it, you might think, well, Antonellis, you should keep your terms to yourself. You might say, that's not a bad idea, Joe. So with that background, I'm going to let Scott talk to you about the unit count and show you the revised streetscape that he's come up with, which again, I I think kind of really maybe is getting to where you want us to be. So with that, I'll stop. Thank you.
The floor is yours, Scott.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me share my screen. Good evening, everybody. Thank you again for working with us on getting to, I think, the the scheme that I think really works for this site. So I'll just revisit the site plan that we had last time just to refamiliarize everybody with that and then kind of look at other historical renderings that we had done previously to set the stage for.
Oh, you muted yourself?
Hold on, let me, let me delete a couple of things here. Is it just, I just got disconnected, so hold on. And I might need to stop my video so that I'm not, if that's okay. And so I'll try to share my screen again. Does everybody see that?
We see that I'm saying that you started there. And now it's up. Yeah.
So again, the big change is that the five linear buildings perpendicular to Main Street, we have created essentially between thirty and whatever you want to this building, we'll probably end up calling it forty. But is that courtyard area? So we have kind of a full point for the commercial end of things as well as the units. And we are able to
We lost the voice, Scott.
I just moved to this before.
I was having very similar problems today on a simultaneous thing.
Peter, do you have the drawing that you could actually post to yourself?
I can, I can do that. Hold on a second. I can grab some. They came in. Please know they came in late, very late in the day, so I didn't have time to send it out. So. Hold on. You'll go for the elevation or the site plan?
So I had sent out, I think, three or four attachments.
I have all of them.
Yeah, I'd like to start again, kind of revisit the site plan. And then I actually wanted to, I think I had the July twenty second renderings are in there. I'd like to visit those as well. I'd like to revisit those and then go with to the new elevation.
Okay. So can everyone see?
No, we can't.
Okay. All right. Floor is yours, Scott.
Yeah, thank you very much. Sorry about the tech difficulties. So again, as mentioned, and as you reviewed, we're able to more effectively align the entrance to our site with the Pleasant Street signalized intersection. And also then create a little more courtyard area and potential expansion for outdoor activities along Main Street as well as within the courtyard between the buildings. And we basically had, in order to get to that two hundred units, we would have had to add that fourth floor to a portion of fifty, but we have not, we have decided not to do that. And that's why the unit count is now one hundred eighty eight. We're still fully renovating and reusing ten and twenty. And then the podium parking there between thirty and fifty provides the parking both at grade level, at the main level, and also below all of those, that plaza as well as the building area. So if you go to the July twenty second renderings, I think there's a few you can scroll through. I just wanted to kind of revisit the previous images that we had submitted back in July, basically because those were responding to your farm-based zoning. And just to basically suggest that while these have not been revised to reflect this new footprint, wanted to just have those again presented to the board to remind them of what we had proposed back in July. Were you able to find those, Peter, or?
Yes, I was going to quickly stop my share, open them up.
And and basically see, just remind you again of what we had proposed, kind of in response to your zoning suggestions in the form based zoning for the downtown and then move on to an idea that we've been kind of kicking around. And actually, we had looked at previously.
So Scott, I believe, you please tell me when you want to move or scroll, but this was what was presented in July.
Yep. So this is again coming up down Myrtle Street, taking the left onto Main Street. And kind of this imagery would be the same, more or less. You can scroll down. And then as we turn the corner, again, the first two buildings, ten and twenty, would be renovated in place and upgraded. Go down. And then as we moved along Main Street, we had the retail, commercial, restaurant spaces, whatever they are on the first floor and then the residential above. Thank you. And then again, this recess into the courtyard area would be moved over and enlarged a little bit, but essentially the same effect. And then the last elevation was again, the tower, a tower element at the end of fifty to again, kind of end that that section of the building proclaimed the entrance to the lower parking area and to have forms reminiscent of the mill buildings. Yep. So then if you pull up the, you know, kind of conceptual rendering, so we've been kicking this around. And actually, we had some, as we went through, back to the pile of drawings, we had actually developed a you know, kind of a more industrial looking elevation in the past, but did not view the the bylaws. So what we're showing here is basically, again, ten and twenty would be renovated in place. And then as we move down to develop this new building, these new buildings, we're envisioning more of an industrial mill rhythm and complex that again pays homage to some a lot of the traditional mill buildings that you see in many of the towns in in Massachusetts. So that you have the kind of the modular spacing, whether it's brick or other material and larger windows. And then you have the tower elements that proclaim the entrance to the courtyard. So as you can't come from the left, from from twenty, you have the first section of the building and then it ends with that tower. And the the buildings that are kind of lightly shaded, that are lighter, are the ones that are very far back from the street. And then you come across to the next fifty, number fifty, with again its own tower, which again is more of a industrial feel, kind of reminiscent of what might have been built if these buildings were again expanded in the past. The thought also is these, the potential connectors. As you can see in the distance, we have kind of a clapboard connector between the two buildings, which is also not unusual in mill buildings. You had some, you know, sometimes the main building was this brick with the modular spacing of windows, kind of the post and beam rhythm. And then a lot of times there were kind of connector buildings or outbuildings that were wood and clapboard. So we know that this is a little different approach. We are still installing a gable roof on the main massings of the building and still maintaining that thirty eight foot maximum height. But as we kind of looked at this new scheme and layout, we felt that it was worth and and again, as we look back through our pile of drawings, we had something that was similar to this a while ago. We just thought it was worthwhile to bring this forward to get your kind of initial feedback and and so on and thoughts. Because we feel that this really does start to say this is, this is a former industrial site. This is what we feel makes sense from the standpoint of saying that this is new construction, but incorporating kind of the massing and rhythm of a mill building for the downtown. I could go on a little bit more, but I guess I can leave it at that.
I think just give us a minute for to absorb, cue cue scroll back so we can see the initial, the first building, Peter. Yeah. Oh, there we go. Nice. Okay.
And actually, just to, since, yeah, you mentioned that on number ten, we actually were anticipating adding a couple more dormer recesses in the front of the building instead of just the two. I think we with the spacing, I think we were looking to do four dormer units there on number ten.
On the first building by the by the chimney. Yep.
I mean, my reaction is maybe we should keep having meetings with you because you just make it better every time, Scott. That's my first reaction. My second reaction is, I don't know what kind of beer you drank when you drew this, but it's beautiful. Keep drinking it. So, you know, without commenting on some of the details of of this thing, because I'm sure we have lots of design viewpoints on the board and we're going to get into it as we get more evolved, but I'm shocked to hear that you're moving in into all those directions that we've been discussing for so long. I don't know what happened, but keep doing whatever it is you're doing. I I think we're moving significantly closer to the vision that we all, at least that I had, which was a much more communal space to the community, open to the community, creating essentially a neighborhood, right, that doesn't exist now, that's attractive, that honors our history and is frankly kind of exciting in the direction you're taking it. And I'm very pleased by less, less units and more of a communal history honored presentation. That's my reaction.
Yeah, I I will concur with with Anna. I I think besides the side plan, because I I had the same comment on the side plan, I don't think that changed. But I I think this approach, I actually really like it. I like it in in a couple of, for for a couple of of reasons. I I like that that this approach, that this option is saying that 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 is kind of reminiscent of an industrial use. But I think what I can read on these drawing and you can confirm, Scott, if that's the intent. You're not trying to create a mill building, and I I hope you don't. But I see a lot of some contemporary language mixed with some rhythm of of what a bill building, a mill building feels like. But I think this is a much more contemporary approach, which I think is very appropriate. I I really like that you're so simplifying the connectors on the back, the the arch that the prior version had. Didn't really speak to me at all. But this is a lot closer. And and I like that all the details and the different buildings are are different from each other, you know, trying to replicate the same the same little tower here and the other one there, that they're all different. So it really creates like a texture and that 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 I think it could could work very well. So I think the direction of of maintaining this, a building of the twenty first century, but that that really isn't a downtown district and that really respects the the history of the site, it seems very appropriate to me. I I I don't, I don't know if if the if 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 maybe the materiality is is in such a large complex of buildings need to be all the same, meaning that, you know, all the brick and all the buildings should be exactly the same color. Maybe yes, maybe not, but 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 I I hope let me know if if it made sense, what what I just said in terms of the language that that you're trying to achieve.
Yes, makes total sense and kind of is in line with our our thinking as we're developing this.
And and where 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 in this building, I cannot, I guess I read it only in one place. Where would where would you planning on, I think you've said before, on reusing the the granite materials that that you're going to salvage?
Yeah, we basically have continued to, along the base of the new buildings, we have about a two foot high granite base that is still being shown there. And then we have an opportunity on, say, the tower elements to perhaps maybe the first floor level become, you know, is built up with granite. And then we introduce the new newer materials above. But again, quite frankly, we haven't worked out those exact details.
Yeah, no, of course, this is conceptual. But so so if you get enough granite, are you intending, what I read here is that in one building, you are having the whole first story to be like a granite facade and then the other one just some some type of a base?
Right, right now, that's what we're showing. Correct.
Okay. I I think that's good. I I like that you know take one language and just spread all over. I think the variation of the different conditions that speak to the to the different locations of the site is appropriate. One, one building is 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 abiding a large open plaza. The other one is facing the street more. So the fact that they are different, I think, is is nice. And the same with the little tower terminations there, one is taller than the other one, one is wider than the other one. I I like that. I think it's good.
Are there comments from the board?
Oh, I have one more question. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
If you go back to the plan, my only concern on on the plan that we, I don't think we have addressed, Peter, if you could put it back. I just want Scott to comment on that.
One minute.
Okay, thank you. So you you know how I feel about the left side of the of the site, so I'm not going to repeat that. But the the ramp that goes and connects on the back seems to start at at the beginning of that plaza. And I don't know if that length has been calculated. I I worry about how how fast the 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 drop is going to be. Is that going to be a a regular slope ramp like like you see on a parking garage or is it a little gentler?
So you're saying in the courtyard area, the ramp that goes down to the rear parking area?
Yeah, I wonder how fast the cars are going to be going down that ramp before they hit the end.
Well, how fast that goes up to the driver. But we are, we are actually, we actually have extended, made that link, that ramp about twenty foot longer than we had it previously. So the slope is a little shallower. But obviously, we want to do a section through there to make make sure we know what it is and that it is something that is conducive to being safe. You know, obviously, we all know that we can put in some speed bumps as needed. But that's a very good comment because it was something we were looking at previously because our previous ramp was shorter than this, just because of several factors of the layout, the previous layout.
Okay, that that's good. I just say that we should all keep an eye on that detail.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Yeah, I have no more comments, Trisha.
All right, thank you. Deepa, Kate, did you want to jump in?
Kate, do you want to go?
And Kevin as well. Sorry, I didn't, you were on my second screen and I didn't know if you were still there.
No, I'm all set, thanks.
I can quickly. Scott, so thank you for the sketch. It, I think, from the materiality point of view, it has a lot of that connection that is existing today. So when you look at that image of rendering and what you really see in real life, there's so much connection. But I would just caution you to, like Marcelo said, I think you need to break those planes a lot more because when we did one twenty eight main, for example, having that large building with the same materials always felt that the building was too large. So I think, I know you're in very initial concept stage. We haven't gotten details, but I would just caution as we progress this to make sure that that materiality and that consistency on the design of that industrial doesn't become too overpowering. Otherwise, you're going to have comments of people feeling that this is such a large building again in spite of the fact that you've taken efforts to bring down the count. But I think I am, I am a contemporary designer. I'm really missing the initial designs that I've seen so far. This is, to me, has gone back a little bit, but I think it seems like this is the preference from design point of view, but you seem to be on the right track. So thank you for this.
Kevin, anything this time?
Yeah, I'll just quickly, I think this is another kind of step in the right direction. And I like that we're taking broad stroke, baby steps here. I definitely appreciate the no need for a fourth floor and the slightly lowered unit count. I I think the the bridge there kind of does really say old mill building to me in between the the two buildings. I think the one like big gripe that we still hear from the town is what what's happening to building thirty and why can't it be saved? So to see more of that granite popping here, maybe in the towers, like you had said, or even if to to break the facade of all brick across the front here, if it could stay as a false wall in front of that that left corner of the building that we're looking at. I don't know. I don't know any of what you can and can't do there, but just to, there's an enormous building made of granite there that's existing that I think could help to solve some of those problems that Marcelo is speaking of of breaking up this one giant brick thing. But I mean, I like the the mill look of the big windows and and that kind of thing. I think it's I guess my preference of design look rather than, sorry, Deepa, the the other ones we had seen. But, you know, obviously, every, every person in town would have their own opinion of that too. So. But again, just the the process we've been through here with small baby steps is great. And I like that we're seeing some change.
Yeah, for myself, I think it's I I think what's maybe more apparent here, which I'm happy about, is that I think this this idea really looks, it it's much more about telling a story. It it has a narrative. It's not about, you know, how do we make these big buildings look like Cape Cod houses, right, which sometimes works and sometimes doesn't? But this site is zoned industrial and there's some really beautiful things, as we know, that are kind of in in very, in very bad condition, but but hidden on the inside of this building, some of the elevators, say, and and things like that. All of this structure, which which can't really be, it just can't translate into immediately into housing or even commercial space. But to me, it's 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 kind of trying to take some of those things that you see on a tour of the inside of the building and bring it out that everyone can see it and experience it. And and so, and even the color of the building that maybe starts, which I I won't hold you to, obviously, at this this early stage, but starts to reflect back to the tower, you know, that things are really starting to talk to each other and kind of forming a narrative about this site that that does say something about the building that's there now, about Ashland history. And so while there's, obviously, these are the the first big brushstrokes of the project, but the I feel now like it has, it has a real concept, both in terms of community, community gathering, in terms of place making and also in terms of kind of latching itself into the site in a way that's not easy to. into the site in a way that's not easy to 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 pick it up and put it someplace else, that there's something about this that that's trying to latch on to this site. And um and I appreciate that as well. So I I I think this is a, you know, just to present us with something that's completely, really completely different than anything we've looked at before um is um is really appreciated. It's not easy sometimes in design when you, you're kind of going, your mind is going down one path and you have to try to get yourself on a completely different one. And I think that's what you did here. You're kind of giving us a completely different idea to look at. Um, and and I and I think it's a good one. I think it's it's definitely, um, yeah, worth pursuing. So I'm I'm excited to see it and I'm excited to kind of keep talking about it to see where it goes and what we can what we can make of it in the process. So I, thank you. It it's it's fun to see. So.
Trisha, I I had a brief reaction to your comments and to Kevin, which is, I like the concept of telling the story. I think you 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 framed that very well. And Kevin's point about that granite in that middle building is is a really powerful one. Um, but I think we can, we can figure that out, like, those are the kinds of details I wish we could, we could have started discussing months ago, right? So I'm just thrilled that we're here and my immediate response to this is is finally, right? Like, um, I think it's it's kind of exciting for sure. Um, I I would suggest to the chair that the, because it's so different, we we should aim to open it up for public comment.
Because that was my next step, absolutely. So, and we will be doing that, obviously, on, as this goes forward in the future. Because I know we don't have a, we don't have a huge audience this evening, but we do have, but we do have some. And so at this point, I will open it up to public comment. Um, and Kev or Kevin, Peter, if you can help me uh keep an eye on that.
So with that said, uh, there's two people at the hand raised, then first, uh, excuse me, the first is Mr. Mark Soney. Mark Soney, can you please unmute yourself and introduce yourself to your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, and again, Mark Soney, forty nine Hawthorne Road. I'm taking a deep breath because I'm I'm doing a memory back to twenty eighteen to now when it was heard and now it's kind of the fruition, at least with this project. I thank you to Mr. Richardson for doing it, doing a shout out for the form-based code. What I got passed in this town is this is the vision I was looking at. It's worth getting there. And Mr. Richardson, you've been in this town long enough to know that if things get to be changed, they may not get back to be the same. And I wanted to use form back, form-based code to get this as a good chorus of what there is for downtown. That along and I, along, I'm I'm one of the um applicants that wanna get on the comprehensive plan and tubes. So this is, this is two, a two-dreamer here. But I I heard the beginning when Mr. Richardson was talking about the form-based code and the design that it it travels well with. So this is Mr. To the Chair, this is going to Mr. Richardson for Form-Based Code shout out. And if things can be get into a progress that the inside can look as good as what you're saying for the outside, you'd be proud to get this to finish, get to the finish line. Thank you.
Next up with the hand raise is Mr. Uh, excuse me, Miss H Nicole, though you miss Helen Nicole. Uh, please unmute yourself uh and state your name and uh address for the record, please.
Hi, yes, Helen. Elliot Circle, Ashland, Mass. Um, so I just, I have to say, I'm looking at this this new rendering and I'm, I even though I am not happy about losing that building thirty, I do like this rendering. And I and I do agree um that it does pay homage to the history of the mills and the industrial nature of of the downtown area. And I'm really, really pleasantly surprised and I like it a lot. The other thing I did wanna mention, though, I don't know what that red material is. I just would like to say that if it were brick, it would really be wonderful, because mills typically are brick. Some of the, one of the buildings down there now is brick and they've mixed the brick and the granite uh now. So to do that in the future as a way of bringing the past forward into the new buildings um would be really something that I think would be be appropriate and be very nice. But I really do like, um, I do like this rendering. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next with their hand raise is Joan Confrati, uh, Godfrey. Uh, please unmute yourself and state your name and uh address for your record.
It's Joan Confrati, One Shore Road, Ashland. And um I also, um, I echo um what everyone has been saying, that I really think this is a much um, much nicer rendering. Um, I'm I'm very pleased that that you're bringing something that forward that is much more Ashland-like and much more um community-oriented. Um, I do, I do like the brick, uh, the brick facade with the granite. Um, I think it was Kevin that mentioned keeping the the side of the building granite. Maybe the granite from the other building could be pulled through to kind of when you're coming up that road, you're looking at the side is granite. And if kind of follows through, I think that'd be great. I know I mentioned last time that I was kind of not, not um happy with the towers. And um I actually have to say that with this rendering, I think they're, they actually kind of go, go where they are. Um, I don't know if this, if, if someone mentioned the size. You know, it's hard to tell from a picture, but um it may be breaking up the roof line a little bit more or something or or awnings on the bottom or something that kind of breaks up the the face of the building a little bit. Um, but that's again for later on, but I just wanna thank you very much for um for going back and rethinking and um coming back with something that's much more Ashland-like to me. Thank you.
Um, thank you to everyone for their comments. Um, Scott, did did you have a idea of what type of materials? Again, won't hold you to it, your beginning, beginning of the process about what type of materials besides the reused granite you might be thinking about here?
Um, well, again, we are kind of showing uh what could be construed as brick. That's not, um we were kind of thinking of brick, but there's also other materials that could could emulate that. But uh, we were, we like the idea of the brick kind of post and beam look, if you will, because it is reminiscent of, again, the post and beam structures that are there. But wanted to get your feedback um and uh understand kind of the me, you know, any any concerns or thoughts about um, you know, again, this this kind of direction where we'd like to go in. Uh, and then certainly, the next step is to further develop uh, you know, the kind of the individual character of each of these buildings. And I do understand, um, you know, that is, again, on the middle building, that is a long uh roof and a long facade. Uh, and it's definitely something we'll be looking at. Again, a previous scheme had this stepping back a little bit, but then we would have be losing some units. And when we had the fourth floor, we said that we can lose some units here if we gain some units there, but now we can't. But anyway, um, we appreciate all the comments. Uh, I am very, uh, very pleased to hear, you know, the most uh, well, again, they're all been pretty positive, because again, we were very much, very enthusiastic as this was being de- developed and formulated and reviewed in-house that we thought, well, we had some concerns because this is quite a departure from, you know, previous designs and thinking. But we we believe it is, we're on, we believe we're on the right track. So I'll I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and I think the overall, I think the overall comments um from the board and from the public at this time kind of are are saying the same thing, that that it looks like it's, it it's on a good track. And um it'd be exciting to see what the next steps are and where it goes. And um, and I think if there's, if this, you know, this is the kind of um this is the kind of project I think it'd be exciting for that, that we can all work together to to really make it, as we've talked about all along. Something that Ashland can really be proud of um in in the town. So, so very much appreciated. Um, if there's no other um comments, I still see Joan's hand up but I assume it's just was up from before. Is that right?
Actually, I just had, um, Scott just mentioned something that um that I had wanted to add.
Go ahead.
And that was um that, as you're looking at the buildings from downtown is if that, if that third building could step back and and I know, I don't know if that means losing another, a few more um apartments type of thing. But if it could step back a little bit so that you can see the um granite buildings from downtown, I think that's um, I'm on the historic commission, this is my own comments though. Um, but Stacy Spies from Hopkinton was there and um she mentioned something that kind of hit home with me is that in a historic district, which this hopefully eventually will be, you kind of stand in the middle and you should be able to look around and see the facades of all of the historic buildings. And I think that with that that third building from the aerial view right now looks this low. It may block the granite buildings from from the um visually. So just maybe something to think about as you're doing, you know, going further into your plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, are there any further comments from the board?
I mean, I'll just say that, you know, I'm starting to understand kind of the vision here, the story. And I'm imagining somebody visiting Ashland and going to the space for shopping, right? There'll be commercial space there and and seeing the history of the mill buildings, whether it's a plaque or some kind of space to honor the history of it, almost like a little museum space, if you will. Um, so that's a story my mind is creating and I appreciate that. And I just wanted to thank Scott for thinking outside the box. I, I have to tell you, Scott, don't take it personally, but my reaction was like, is that really Scott? Or did someone kidnap him, replace him and bring in a totally different design team? Um, so I think it's pretty amazing that you were willing to take such a step in a different direction and I appreciate that.
And I I I would only add, Scott, next time you guys work a little bit on the side plan, pl- please take a, take another pass to the left side to the inception of the slide and 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 see if you can work something a little gentler there.
I assume, Scott, given that this is a that obviously this is on the beginning and stages and that you have a lot of feedback already that you have, that you have enough to work on between now and when we see you again. Peter, I don't know when that would be or when you would, Scott, when you would propose that it might be. But is that true that you you have enough, you have enough homework, you have enough to do out of?
Yes, agreed. Uh, we have uh great feedback and I think we have the direction that uh we should move in and that we would like to move in. And yes, we will need some time to uh develop the next round of uh design refinements to review.
Would you be looking then at two weeks or four weeks from now or or what, what do you have in mind?
I I I believe it's a four-week uh window at least. I don't know when the next meeting is, in early April.
It'll be April thirteenth.
Are we, are we pretty good? I mean, we just put something on April thirteenth, but um
Uh, we On April thirteenth, we do, uh, we will have, um we will have three oh one Lawn Street, uh, which is the Shaw's Plaza, uh, continuing on.
So that would be basically an introductory meeting.
There'll be introductory meeting for the Shaw's Plaza, which would be, which obviously, I think we would be looking to give them a time, you know, hour window, uh, and then obviously continuing that matter out. And other than that, yes, that's the only thing on the agenda at this point. Uh, the, excuse me, um
Rich, but nine to forty-nine main is continued.
That was April thirteenth, which is our next, excuse me. When do, do we move that to April thirteenth or do we, we move that to our next meeting, which we March twenty-third?
No, we
Okay.
Is that the intention of that um of the uh continuance?
You know what? Let me uh double check. Yep, he says April thirteen.
Okay. So, is um, is six weeks too far out for you, Scott? Would you rather check in and tell us when you'd like to check in? Because at this point, I think we wanna make sure we can answer at least some questions for you or give you some feedback when you need it.
Yeah, well, if there is room uh on the thirteenth, I think we would have uh the next round of uh updates to review. But again, if it's gonna be a tight, tight schedule, um
Why don't we why don't we put it on for the thirteenth? But um, but make sure we're checking in to see, to see if that's gonna work, you know, for you to free to have the time that you need. Things change so much, but I think it's okay putting it on the thirteenth. And if we need to give you more time on the the meeting after that, then then we'll look at that. Sometimes we load up our schedule and they all, everything continues and we're left empty.
Yep, alright, good, yep, thirteen sounds good.
Okay, is that agreeable to the board? Anyone has any other points of view? Okay, lucky thirteen. Alright, then that said, I will make a motion to continue um, the tech ten to sixty Main Street special permit and site plan review to April thirteenth. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a roll call though?
Deepa, I'm good, I.
Yana Testmanitsky, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye. So um, thanks, Scott. Thanks to you and your team and we will see you on the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good night.
Alright, so, next on our agenda, um, really, it's just our own stuff. Um, and just, just to clarify, Peter, this, I didn't get any meeting minutes, did I, for this week? No? Okay.
They're, they're on the agenda, but I never got them.
Okay. We're ready yet, okay.
Yep.
Um, and um, just before we get into this other discussion, I just wanted to confirm a few things um, from the, from the bottom of the list, just to make sure people have it out there, that you do have a date scheduled for Conservation Commission, is that right?
That's correct. So I have the date with the Conservation Commission. Um, well, I reached out to our conservation agent, Becca, uh, and she followed up with her chair and her board. And I believe um the chair of the Conservation Commission um will be joining us on March twenty-third, which is our next meeting.
Okay, so March twenty-third for conservation. And did we have a new date for the Upper Charles Trail?
Yes, I have emailed Preston Crowe and I did uh pencil him in for April twenty-seventh. Um, which would be the second meeting in April. Um, and, 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 and we have been speaking with the the consti- the Sustainability Committee who is looking to come in and meet with us as well. And and so I'm gonna schedule them in as well, uh, and and we can kind of go from there. Uh, and kind of fit them around our our public hearings.
Yeah, it might make sense to um maybe put them on in the on the twenty-seventh as well, but give them a heads up that we might have a open, you know, if if something open if something opens up, we could do the thirteenth, but maybe that we can see him on the twenty-seventh as well. They're looking at something more specific, um, looking at a a tree bylaw. So, but we can um, we we can talk to them about that, see if that's the right date. Okay, I just wanted to make sure those those dates were out there as well as the Sustainability Committee, because all those things are are happening in the upcoming uh two months. Okay, so that said, um, and we'll come back to that list, but I just wanted to get those dates out there, I think. Kevin, unless I misstate to say, and you might have to leave a little early from the meeting, right?
Yeah, I I think I might jump off now. Actually, I just have a very early morning, morning tomorrow.
Is is there anything else you needed from that list to go over for your, the questions you might have had before you?
Um, no, I don't think so. I'm just trying to real quickly pull up. Um, no, I don't think so. I'm just trying to real quickly pull up. Sorry, the wrong email. Nope. He just, my input on the free application conference thing is I I kind of like the more vague versions, I think. But just, you know, without it being necessarily a requirement, and I think it was the Fitchburg one that seemed like a good model to work around to me at least, but I'll let you guys discuss.
Okay.
You all will have good opinions anyways.
Yeah, and obviously we won't be voting on any language tonight, so um. Okay, thanks, Kevin. Okay, so I just want to get those few things out of the way while I knew Kevin was going to be here. So then we can go back to item five, which is the discussion of the accessory dwelling bylaw. So Kate and I have been talking a little bit like about this, Peter and Alvaro have been involved in some of those conversations as well. But Kate, did you want to introduce this one? Do you want me to introduce it? What are you thinking?
Um, well, I I could introduce because the version that I I think at least half the planning board, if not everyone, has kind of shown an interest in this. And based on the feedback, the last meeting, I, it occurred to me that we we should go for a simpler, modest change at this time because there there are many, many issues and angles. And the background, I think for me on, on this specific one is that I think I wrote it up sort of in the proposal, but I was also thinking like, let's say I'm a person considering my mom's eighty-seven and I have to decide and I'm not from a family that can put her in assisted living. And so I have to decide about building this, right? And this isn't personal, I built a house for my mom, just saying as an example. That you're now going to be like, well, my mom's eighty-seven, how long is she going to live? And now I have this apartment accessory dwelling and sitting there the way our current bylaws, unless I adopt a kid to fill it or, you know, maybe some other relative. It's very narrowly defined. And so this simple really adjustment is saying I I could choose to build this through exactly the same process. It goes through zoning board appeals, if if every condition's met, if they think it's responsible. All of that, but it would allow you to say not have to think about how long is that person going to stay? Or my mom really wants to retire to Florida, so I'm I'm not going to be able, it's not practical, but it's also many of the presentations for like seniors staying in their house, that was under like Housing Production Plan. Our community has shown support for this idea, so. So though I could see down the road, many, many changes that people have discussed, I think for for this town meeting to get this simple, to kind of alleviate. And then I also wrote, there's just undue conditions in our current bylaw, re-inspections that we do not ask of any other housing structure. So I think, I think that should just be simplified anyway.
To, I don't know if everyone had a chance to review the ADU information. We had put a placeholder in for the warrant. And in case we wanted to do something with ADUs. And my, just um just my take on it is that, you know, I was on the Housing Production Plan Committee. I've done ADUs. And as part of my professional work. And but the, as I was looking at, I supported the ADU. And I still do completely within our Housing Production Plan. And I think this is a good tool that we can use. But um just when we were in the midst of talking about it, Peter opened his newspaper one day in the local Needham paper. And it had the hearing notice for modification to the ADU bylaw in Needham. And and so he sent it to me, he scanned it and sent it to me. Just coincidentally, it's the February twenty-third paper, obviously, so it's very recent. And in going through it and reading through it, what it said to me immediately is Needham, and I don't know this to be true, right? But my sense was that Needham is making changes to its ADU bylaw to try to correct some of the things it did initially that currently aren't working. And it, to me, it was a little eye-opening that about really wanting to understand all of the issues first. So that we're not backtracking later. And making sure we understand all the implication, even something that seems very simple to our current bylaw because we don't have and correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but we don't have a mechanism for those things to become rentals. You know, once an ADU is, it isn't being used by a family member. That said, there also isn't staff currently to to uh you know, to administer all of that and to, what's the word, you know, to check up on it. So it's just a much more, it's, I just think it's a complicated issue that in reading how complex the Needham notice was that even though I am in support of ADUs and ways that they might be used, I'm I'm not in support of jumping into it without for me, a full understanding of what happens when you tweak certain things. And that's kind of where I, where I I sit on it. I guess I'm not well, I'll let other people comment first about where they're, where they are with this.
I mean, it's an, it's an interesting point and question of kind of what is enough input for us, right, as a planning board? It's a tricky one. It's, I, I can't speak for what happened in Needham. I think every community is very different. I know we have an affordable crisis, affordability crisis, right? And I think as a community, we're going to continue that to have that issue and it's going to probably get worse. I do see this is a simple change that in its intent is a way to make it easier to utilize ADUs for something other than a family member. That seems to be the gist of this. Is that right, Kate?
Well, yeah, and I thought it was interesting that that Trish said that we don't even have the staff to enforce it anyway. And I feel like that's just a bad practice, you know, and if we can do something about cleaning that up as well. I mean, that's sort of, my, my take is I suppose it's probably not. If a relative moves away, I suppose it's being rented anyway. Right?
But the premise of your change, right, like if you had to stand in front of town meeting tomorrow to defend this, the intent here is to make it easier to use these types of units for non-family, right?
Not easier, just allowable under the exact same conditions we would allow it now.
And so to me, the big kind of, like, I'm just trying to imagine what I, what would be my reaction at town meeting to this? What would I hear from the community? And I think the biggest unintended consequences were basically legalizing, if you will, renting it to non-family, which then raises the question of Airbnbs and other types of things that could in fact be the unforeseen consequence. In some communities, you know, Airbnbs have actually increased the affordability crisis, right? Because once you open it up to the world of Airbnbs, things become less affordable. So I kind of see both ways. I see Kate's point and I see Trish's point. And I for one think it's a wonderful thing to present a town meeting for a lively debate because I don't think this will pass necessarily. But I think it's going to create a really interesting conversation and and give us some good things to think about to, because in my experience, the best bylaw changes don't happen in one town meeting. They happen when you present something to the community, you hear their concerns. If I'm right, and that's the community concern, this will not pass. And we will probably need to try again with essentially an Airbnb bylaw that takes care of the community's concern. And I don't know if I am in the best position to decide what the community is concerned about until we put this in front of town meetings. So my thought would be, there's no harm in giving the community an opportunity to see this and to comment on it and to hear from the planning board as to where we're thinking about it and what our concerns are. That's kind of where I'm at.
I think I would really disagree with that notion of town meeting, that I think before when we have seen things come to town meeting that weren't fully prepared, they did have a discussion, but I'm not sure town meeting is the place. I mean, that's for public forums and public hearings. A comprehensive plan is a good place for those discussions. But I think when things come to town meeting, they should have been pre-vetted and pre-understood and understood the consequences. That's the that's, that's the last place, I think. I don't think it's about opening up a conversation, a debate. I don't think that's what town meeting is about. That's about governance. So I would disagree. I, I think that this thing should be I, things always come up at town meeting and questions, and I am not against that. They should. But when you present something at town meeting, I think you have to be pretty confident that you have covered the bases, that you have really looked at something very in, in a lot of detail and very completely before putting it out there for, for a potential vote. That's just where I stand on it, so.
So what I think is interesting is like, we'll let someone build a hundred and seventy-four apartment unit that could be full of Airbnb, right? We have and, and then like an individual doesn't have that same, like, I, I think that's just a very interesting value statement. I mean, I, I think I would tend to agree with Trish's comment about if, if we think it's going to fail, that we probably we probably shouldn't bring it, but I, I, I guess the value judgment is kind of a little disappointing.
And I'm not making that value judgment. So that, that, those weren't the words I was having, I was saying. So that's, that's not what I I didn't say anything about that.
So, I mean, here's kind of my thought on this. I, I think that this is a tremendous start of a really good thing. And we should continue to explore it and we should continue to think about what are those unforeseen consequences? Like I said, the Airbnb thing is the thing that jumps out. I think, Kate, you're right, the Airbnb thing applies to the entire community, right? So it's not just about single-family dwellings that, that are mostly impacted by this. You know, we have more than one town meeting a year. I think, you know, I would suggest we regroup. Hopefully, we have a little bit more resources as a planning board. Whether it's with our new assistant planner, not to call you out, Alvaro, or with the numerous volunteers that are very interested in the comprehensive plan process, many of whom will not be able to be part of that process, but will be available. Because they're interested in planning. So I feel like we should maybe table this and come back to it and continue to, to pick at it. Like, I would like to figure out what happened in Needham. I think that can be figured out.
Yeah, and I am not saying that anything happened in Needham. I said, this, what it gave me reading this, it gave me the, the feeling that there is a lot I don't know about ADUs and how they affect communities. And I better learn it before I present something to town meeting. That's what it's led to me.
No, totally. And I remember finding a bunch of memos and articles about the consequences of ADUs in Massachusetts and elsewhere when we were dealing with inclusionary zoning, right? Because ADUs are one way to address affordability. And I think we can piece that together. But I, I will reinforce, you know, the argument that town meeting is essentially live democracy that goes back hundreds of years and it truly was meant for the exact kind of conversation we're having. And, and I think if the majority of the board was comfortable with this language, I would be open to having you go to town meeting. That's kind of what I'm saying. But if we're not there, we're not there and we should keep going. We should keep working to make it better.
I just want to jump in. I just want to give everybody, so thank you so much, Trish, for introducing the Needham. So after our last planning board meeting following Friday, right, I was eating breakfast with my girls and I was flipping through the newspaper that comes to Needham. And, and to the planner that I am, I was reading the legal notices in the town pages and this came upon it, right? So I took it out and I brought it to work. I scanned it and I kind of said, okay, like, there's other towns out there, right? Not just us. Thinking about changes, right? And going a little bit deeper, I also just wanted to go and, and I don't want to believe in the point here, but the term family, right? I opened up the bylaws, right? And I have it in front of me, so I'm just going to click off and read this, right? But the definition of a family in the actual bylaw, right? Is a number of individuals living and cooking together on the premise as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit, right? So when, I think the other thing to think about is, okay, how do you define unit? Like, that's a pretty broad, right? It's a unit that cooks together, right? And lives in a household together. They're not talking about blood, they're not talking about marriage, they're not talking about any of those legal, you know, those, those typical things when you think about family, right? But I think that's also something to think about is that we have a very big description, wide description of family and I, and I think that's a great thing. But when you start to think about, okay, EDU is for a family member, right? So what is a family member? Use the definitions, right? And I think we use your definition, we can use our definitions for, as a positive thing, right, in this instance, right, to an advantage. Then if we use applying that definition of family, I think that opens the door to somebody outside of blood family that you.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not in the ADU, though it defines it differently. So that's, that's another good point that sort of, so we have a conflict in there. And we don't have resources to enforce it, so we just have a bylaw that's not very good, which is a reason to try to improve it at spring town meeting.
I totally agree that it is definitely a reason to improve it, but not in a rushed way.
So, so here's a thought. I mean, I'm looking at, I'm sure you guys reviewed it and if you didn't, it's pretty cool. There's a, you know, mass.gov has a really nice case study of three communities in Massachusetts, Lexington, Northampton and Pelham, Mass. And it has a wonderful, like, here's what they changed in their bylaw, here's why it worked. Maybe we regroup and start there and pull those three communities that are being presented by the state as excellent case studies of when edits to zoning works for ADUs. And maybe we regroup for fall on, on this. But I, I think we, we shouldn't be afraid of it. I think this is a really, making AD, ADUs work better is a very powerful way to give individuals and households the ability to, to create affordable housing. So you know, we should continue to explore it for what it's worth. And I appreciate that Kate brought it forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, it is part of the Housing Production Plan, which we passed in twenty twenty-one. It is something that we should get on and and look at it more specifically, even with other things going on like comprehensive plan and everything, you know, things need to go on simultaneously. But just like the tree bylaw that we talked about today, Peter and I and Alvaro and with members of Sustainability Committee, that there's just not time for everything you need to do between now and town meeting to have that bylaw ready. And that's how I feel about this. So I'm not the only planning board member. Obviously, this is, this is about a vote, whether we as a you know, we as a committee want to have this bylaw ready and go through that process for spring. To me, I just don't think there's time to do it right. So that wouldn't be, I would not be in favor of that. So.
So are you saying that you don't think it's time to do it right, meaning like a wholesale redo? I guess because I I would agree with that, but I mean, you're saying that this in, by May could not be updated adequately for an incremental change.
Not for the process that you have to go through for a warrant in the public forum. And he means that we have to have that text put together fairly quickly. And then to me, it's not about just striking one line and and going on. I think it's looking at what does, what do the implications of that line mean? How does it ripple through everything else? And that's what I want to understand first. I don't want to have to undo something at fall town meeting that I did at spring town meeting. I want to know, I want to have thought it through. So.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we miss out on incremental change because sometimes we have to go through that and and what happens is our zoning just stays broken, you know?
Yeah, well, we'll just disagree on that. So we'll see what the other committee members, how they feel about it. So, because I think we've been in situations already where we went through things with some. In some bylaws, in some detail, and still miss stuff. You know, so, um. So that's why this seems to me very quick, very. Yeah, so. But we have a five-person board here, and so far only three people have spoken on it. So.
Well. My opinion has not changed on this from the beginning. I've said it before. I don't, I don't know what did, what what triggered the need to to try to start in making incremental changes to this. I don't buy that this would really. Um, improve the affordability of housing in general with the amount. I think the dangers. Of destroying the urban fabric of a lot of neighborhoods are a lot bigger. The dangers of uh, the Airbnb pollution. Urban pollution on a town of our size are. Could be considerable. I don't buy the argument that is a valid judgment that Kate, I just disagree with that. I think an apartment building has the infrastructure. Urban infrastructure and zoning infrastructure to deal with rental units. Neighborhoods do not. So it's it is is a matter of fact of how humans tend to react when opportunities are open. And I think this one is one that is that is not needed. I I just, I think what we have is limited enough that it allows a family to reasonable. Um, for reasonable accommodations. See, if that is the case, going through a process. I I I I will not. Uh, I personally would not be part of that. I'm not in favor of it.
So you, as in just in general, because that is is in our housing production plan. And that's something that our community, you know, you you pick. Obviously, we're a lot of people, a lot of work it's done in town by volunteers, so you can pick what's a priority, but it absolutely is part of our housing production plan.
Yeah, so I I'm saying, let's leave it there. I don't think we need to change anything.
Which which means, no, that Housing Production Plan talks about making improvements and making it more accessible and more doable and. As a way to attack affordable housing.
I I I just don't buy the the connection. I mean, I have a lot where I could do it. I could make money if I wanted to. I I I I just don't think that that that's a personal part, and some people will have will have the lots that allow for that. Some people would want it, but the lots do not allow it because of the constraints of the specific piece of land. It's something that sounds pretty, but it cannot, it it will, the results will not be what the intention is. That's how I see it.
I also think it's important important to understand that just because something is in the Housing Production Plan or in the Comprehensive Plan. But that doesn't mean that we as individuals are going to agree with all that, right? It's a community decision, and that doesn't mean we're going to spend. Our time and effort for something we don't believe in.
And and the last, the last thing. Oh, sorry, Tricia.
No, go ahead. I was done.
No, no, the last thing I would say is that I agree with the discussion that happened earlier. That the 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 place to have discussions is really through open meetings or open uh, town um, discussions. And not at the at the town meeting. Um. Meeting. That's a legi- legislative body, and I I I think I I agree with Tricia where. Any change should be really vetted carefully before we start making changing a letter here or a word there. I think we need to all be convinced of what the implications of any change. Are going to be before we just start trying to tweak things on the edges. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Dipper. I'm not gonna take any more of anybody's time. I think. I would echo every single word Marcelo just said. I think I was at the same place. Um, I don't have anything new to add than what Marcelo just said.
I mean, I'll I'll just, I'll counter some of the things I'm hearing, which is that the whole concept of town meeting in Massachusetts is. Literally, regular residents not connected to the planning board can make a petition. To bring to town meeting to change bylaws. Um, and so this idea that somehow, you know. Planning board members have to approve things and fully vet it and make it just right and consequently think of every consequence. I can tell you, there's quite a, quite a few things in our bylaw right now drafted by folks other than us that were not vetted in that fashion, but. This idea that it has to be vetted that way in a town meeting model, I just simply disagree with. I think I think the whole concept of a town meeting model. Is to give citizens the right um, to go to town meeting and change our our zoning and our bylaws.
No one's disagreeing with that.
So in light, in light of that, I actually very much believe strongly, and I'll say it outright, that. If anyone on this board presents a um. A bylaw change that I don't agree with a hundred percent, but I believe that your intention is to. Improve the community, I would personally allow it to go to town meeting for proper vetting by the whole community, not just by me. With my personal views against. Against dwellings, for example, in this context. So I think part of my responsibility is to make sure the whole community gets heard, not just my own personal view. Um, so I just want to make that very clear, and and I'm a little bit perplexed by this idea that we may disagree with public policy that's. Literally in our housing production plan. I think we actually have a duty as public servants to make sure that that gets. Um, community vetting. Um, and frankly, that's town meeting in our in our town.
Anna, you, I think you're exactly, you're correct. I think what is, what we're talking about here is, I think we are not ready for that, right? We have to first understand what we are trying to change here. And what implications it'll have before even presenting it to the community and getting their feedback, but I feel like. We are not ready at this point for that. Um, and I think that's what. It feels like, that's why it feels like it may not be ready for that town meeting. You're right, it, we definitely need. I mean, the public has every right to come and um, comment on the laws, but I think. What we are seeing here, what I'm understanding last fifteen, twenty minutes is that we are not ready. We haven't understood the whole depth of this concept before sharing that concept with the public and. Making sure that we are guiding them, right? When they are ready with comments and questions, I think we have to understand it before. Going in front of them. Um, I think that's what I, that's what I understood, and that's what I think I was.
Yeah.
Leaning towards.
No, I I think the ma- I think the majority of the planning board is not prepared to sponsor this bylaw change, is what I'm hearing. The point I'm trying to make is that. Town mo- town meeting actually allows any resident to propose a change and. Um, and we should remember that because, you know, we do have some ownership in zoning. That's our authority. That's our. That's literally our state jurisdiction. This is something that we as a planning board can do. Um, and so I hope we'll do that rather than leaving it to, um. You know, to people who might be desperate for affordable housing. Um, and might want to do it themselves.
So are there any other comments before we we can take a official vote? On, I guess we'd be taking official, a a vote on whether we are going to. Um, pursue the warrant or town at town meeting, or Peter, do we have to officially withdraw it, or what what happens?
No, I think we just kind of, you know, I think from, I don't think, I don't think a vote has to happen on. I think, I think from from my understanding, and if I'm wrong, I think it's to put this on back on the. Back on, you know, put it on the back, not a back burner, but to move it off of the of of a Springtown meeting vote. And to continue to work and and describe it, you know, I think, uh. I think pulling the three communities that you mentioned in are the the next step that we can take the. The Lexington, the Northampton, and the Pelham bylaw, and we can kind of compare those. Uh, and then obviously you could kind of start that discussion, um. So I don't think, I don't think a necessary vote has to happen, because I don't think correct that vote yet.
Oh, sorry, you're saying that we don't need to, we don't need to even vote on anything now. I I was gonna take a vote of the com- committee to to kind of a. Officially to agree that we're not going to pursue this at town meeting right now.
Let me, that seems to be the majority view in the room. I think that's pretty obvious. Do we need, I don't think we need to formally.
That's fine. It's just usually that someone typically says, I think we should take a vote on it to be sure, but if.
Yeah, I I I actually, I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing to vote on it, just.
Okay.
But I, I mean, I I feel like I already heard everyone's vote, but, um.
And just, just as a note, like, I think to me, this has, I mean, if if we look at how much work went into. And the inclusionary zoning bylaw. That we had put out there, and that actually a lot of work did go in into that, but it still wasn't ready. We still, as a group. Didn't want to just send it to town meeting to be debated there. Right? It's it's that kind of thing. It wasn't ready. We held it back. We did not send it forward to town meeting. So i- it it's kind of in the same, it's kind of in the same thing. We want it to be right before we, I think. Before we put our name on it and send it to town meeting, not. That's my view of town meeting. So obviously, there can be a disagreement about it, but that's where I stand. Um, so just to have an official. An official vote on it. Because we tend to do that these days for small issues. I will make a motion that we. Do not pursue the ADU for Springtown Meeting.
I'll second this.
Okay. And a roll call vote?
Dipper, Mike, guy.
I'll vote nay. No, I've I've never voted no. I'm doing it now. Like I said, I think it makes sense to to air it out, but. I'll do that with a lot of respect for this disagreement we're having.
Marcelo, I.
Um, I'm not gonna vote against uh, my own submission. I'm just gonna abstain.
Right, and Tricia Kendall, I. So we will not be going for Springtown Meeting. That in no way. I am not in full agreement with Marcelo, though I respect his opinion. Um, and I just, I want to figure it out first before I know what my opinion is. That's where I am on IDADUs. I think there's a a great place for them, so don't. Please don't take my vote as I'm against ADUs, because that would be the first furthest thing from the truth. So, okay. That said. Um, we are then at our just, and we already covered some of these things, but we are just at the list of. Hey, what's going on? Um, reports of different committees. Um. Does anyone have, is there a report from Comprehensive Plan? That's always a big one.
I'll make it as simple as I can. Um, there was a shocking amount. Of applicants for the Steering Committee. I think over fifty people applied for.
That's great.
The precinct positions. Um, the next agenda for the, what are we called, Kate?
Project Management Group.
Project Management Group that will ultimately be absorbed into the Steering Committee. Um, the next agenda, I think we have a meeting next week, will focus on. Um, the questions, the interview questions, if you will, that will be utilized to select the candidates for the precinct roles. And so that we get closer to selecting those candidates, recommending them. Recommending the final precinct candidates. To a joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Board for the ultimate selection, so that our Steering Committee can start to meet in the coming months. Um, and start its work on the Comprehensive Plan. That's the quick and dirty update.
Are the committee, are the people who are already on a committee, are they, are the, is the committee self-selecting a member? How is that working?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my.
Sustainability Committee would self-select a representative.
Yes, exactly. And apparently that has already happened. But we, whatever we're called, sorry, I don't remember what we're called again.
Project Management Team.
Thank you. Um, we have not necessarily seen that whole list yet of the self-selected members, at least I haven't, and I'm sure the next meeting will will see that list. Um, and so in the coming months, the Planning Board should look for a joint meeting with the Select Board where you will. Get the final roster, if you will, for your approval. That's my understanding of how this will work. Did I summarize that right, Kate?
Yes.
And then the one thing I'll add is, when you have over fifty people apply for precincts who have incredible applications and interest. I mean, some of these applications, I'm like, maybe you should be running this thing. Um, there's some amazing people applying, and I do think that we as a planning board might want to think about how to engage with those people. For example, there's a lot of work that, um. ADUs, other work that we're interested in. And, you know, I think. All of you would find the 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 talent pool to be quite deep. And I wonder if we should discuss that maybe at our next retreat or in some other fashion as to how can we engage. With so many people who are gonna not be selected. But need to be engaged in planning because they're deeply interested.
Is there, is the RFP out there yet for the?
Uh, the RFP document was drafted. As far as I know, staff was making final, final kind of edits that were voted upon and approved, so the. Group did approve. The RFP, and it's going to be released hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Great.
So yes, and I'm sorry, I missed the part, very important part. So the RFP for the consultant would go out shortly. Um, and the consultant interviews, from what I understand, would be similar, although I don't have an update yet on the selection process.
Okay. Um, there's one thing, or I don't know if you're gonna mention this, Anna, but we we did find out through the Project Management Group that. The um, version of the whole kind of process plan that the Planning Board approved. Um, was not actually voted on by the Select Board. They did receive it, but it wasn't voted, and I I. I don't know that we got an exact why, so um, as representatives of the Planning Board, Anna and I asked that. The Select Board revisit that to to actually vote in that document, so we know as both groups.
And this is a document that we're happy to redistribute. If you, you 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 may or may not recall, I think it was sometime between October and November. Where I presented to the Planning Board a kind of a process document of how this would go about. We voted for it. And then we were like, great, let's get it over to the Select Board. Um. It's not really clear if the Select Board got it or not, although there's some emails showing they did, but then it's clear that they did not. So it's very, very confusing, but ultimately, everybody agrees that there was no formal vote by the Select Board on something.
That was this like the one page, very simplified, very flexible calendar with the ribbons? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. That was the added, so the Select Board sent us two pieces of paper. We sent back three pieces of paper. That as that as the whole plan, so the whole plan of three pieces of paper was not voted on by the Select.
Oh, well, I remember, yeah, I remember in that meeting, we talked about, hey, there should be some kind of calendar. We kind of agreed that. It should be. Simple and flexible and allow for change and.
Yeah.
But to give us some kind of guidance. And so I think that's the thing we put together and that we agreed on.
Yes.
But, uh, yeah, may not, I don't know. I don't remember.
Bottom line is, we insisted, Kate and I insisted, that because the Planning Board expected the Select Board to have partnership with us. And to vote on it, and we agreed it would go to them. That was discussed at the Planning Board meeting, and it never happened that it should happen. In order to tie all the pieces together. Um, and.
I mean.
That's.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think that's, uh. You know, that's great. I I wouldn't, uh. I I would never want to put the caveat on it that. This thing is, we voted on this people's paper, it's set in stone, and no other good idea should ever penetrate into this document. Because that would not be the way I voted on the doc.
I don't think that was the intent either.
Okay.
To start and ask them to vote for it, right?
Okay. But I think that would be misrepresenting the Planning Board to 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 do that.
I, I believe I was very precise when we discussed this, that uh, there was an understanding that. Planning changes over time. However, this was a document that was very important that we voted on. And that we agreed would be voted on by the Select Board, and Select Board should have the opportunity. To properly vet it and discuss it and make sure they're comfortable with it, and if they have disagreements with it, they should be able to air those out. As a Select Board. Um, and I I believe there was agreement to that. At our last meeting, and it would be brought back to the Select Board for that type of discussion and vote.
That's fine. I just, I just hope little things like that don't. Actually disrupt the process in general, which I think has happened to other. Big efforts such as comprehensive plans, that one little thing implodes the whole mission and. I I hope we can all not let that happen. So.
I think that's the exact intent, to avoid a disconnect between two very important entities to the Comprehensive Plan, the Planning Board and the Select Board. So, um, the intent here is to get us on the same page, not to disrupt the process.
Okay.
And I think I would add, just, uh, if I may, Tricia, I have noticed that I think in this journey. Kate and Anna have been bringing along the community as well, and keeping them up to date on what's happening. Which I think is a great thing, so that it's not just something happening there and you hear it once in six months. But really bringing them along in this journey to make sure that, uh, they are as vested as any of us. Who've been talking about it for us last year and a half. So thank you both for really keeping that momentum going. So appreciate that.
Good, well said.
I agree.
I don't think we can take full credit for over fifty residents who apply. I don't think we can take full credit for over fifty residents who applied potentially for two-year commitment.
Um, just take it.
I, but. We should all take it because we voted for it. So good, good, good job, everyone. How's that?
No, I see myself as pushing responsibility for this off on you and Kate, so.
I know I did.
Marcelo and I and Deepa have no qualms about saying that, so we're all, we're all, we're behind you, so.
Well, don't, don't, don't avoid it too much. I, I, in all seriousness, I think that there is a, an expertise on this board. That will become extremely important as the steering committee starts its work. Um, and the planning board is a key partner in the process and will need to offer input to the various drafts. Of the comprehensive plan, et cetera. So I, I hope that you will become more engaged. On issues that are of interest to you, such as affordable housing, Tricia, and other issues to others on the board.
Yeah, definitely.
I think there's gonna be a role for everyone, e- even if you cannot do the whole thing.
Definitely. So yes, thank you, thank you for your work. It's a heavy load. Uh, is there anything else on this list that um either needs an update? Um, Kevin had mentioned the pre-application conference, but. I wasn't really intending, obviously according to the agenda, to focus on that tonight. I just wanted it. Um, to remain in our scope as we have time.
Um, I'm hoping, like, I, I don't mind, you know, doing work and I brought up the topic and I, I. I guess we aren't voting on it tonight, but I'd like to kind of know what the timeline, because I don't think, I don't think this is. Um, sort of heavy lift. I think it should be, I put in the um. Kind of write up that it should be married with a timeline that I think we had talked about way back at the uh retreat we had with the design review. So I, I, I guess it's sort of like the comprehensive plan. I'd like to see a timeline and when we are gonna talk about it or what. Or, or, or just everybody doesn't want it, but me and Kevin, then.
I mean, I, I kind of got the stuff just today, I think, you know, um.
I sent that like before the weekend. I.
Yeah, that was my fault. I just got it today.
Okay, yeah, so um, so it just, it, it, it just got out today. So um, I. I glanced at it. I don't even know if there was a, a, a proposal you were making, Kate, if you were taking things out of these and you read. Did you write a text for Ashland, a proposed text?
I mean, I, so I looked, Ashland, we don't really have planning board rules, because I was looking, I could just insert here or edit, but as far as I know, I did not find any. So I, my recommendation is sort of like. Kind of simple as we would strongly encourage, we would add it to the timeline. I, I think um, I like the idea of, I saw some town had it right in their website and it was a really nice statement. Um. But I, I know, like, I don't need to, we don't need to tag us tonight, but I would be really disappointed if we didn't set some deadlines or guidelines when we are gonna. Talk about it.
I, I think the deadline is, if you're taking this on, Kate, when, if you want to create a text that you would recommend based on your research, that you can say, here's my recommended text. Planning board, and then we can look at it and modify it and add it to. You know.
Well, so that's the problem. Add it to what, right? That's.
I, I have an idea. So I had, I had started drafting kind of an, a timeline. If you guys remember, when we met with design review, we discussed having a one-page document. For developers that shows on one piece of paper the chronology of a project, site review, special permit, how it goes step by step, where they come in, et cetera. So I, I tried to draft it and then I kind of gave up and I found a document already created by another town. I think I shared it with Peter. That has deadlines going left to right, right? So I could take that document, Kate. And we could kind of add your proposed language to it, for example. And, you know, if the board is okay with it.
Simple as that.
I can take a stab at that. I don't know what other towns' rules are, like, this is a, the document I found that I shared with Peter with the deadline was created by a different community. I don't think they like own it. I think we can just kind of edit it.
There was a regional planning agency and that was the special permit timeline.
Okay. So maybe we can edit it to include the site review process in some way, or have a second page or something and add Kate's language to it. So if it's okay with you guys, Tricia, I'll reach out to Kate and we can try to draft it together, because I was working on the timeline. She's working on this language. We can squish the two of them together and present it at the next, whenever the next planning board meeting is.
Yeah, I, I think that's great. I think that's it. It's like when, when we have something to, in front of us that we can talk about, then we can. We can talk about that and make.
Yeah, somehow we can maybe tighten up. And I thought the process was send to Peter and ask him to send to the board, which I did. So, I mean, it was. Probably would have pushed this along. If it didn't happen, it's fine, but we should iron that out too, how that.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, and that's fine. It's just that we, we, I wasn't planning on having. We were gonna discuss the ADUs and everything else, but we weren't gonna discuss that as well. That might have been the next meeting that they, we would take on that topic. So um.
Um, and that's, and that's literally what I'm asking now. So if that's fine, we'll set that for a target for the next meeting if that's gonna happen or.
Yeah, so if, if you would like to have a discussion with that before putting even this document together, then we will put that on the agenda for the, as a discussion topic. For the next.
Have a lot of, I think we're gonna have a lot of room on next meeting, the twenty-third.
That we will have a lot of room?
I think, yes, we only have, there's no more, there, there'll be.
But to make it short then.
Can't we ever have a break?
Yeah.
Yeah, for once.
I know, it's uh, you know, we're gonna have the conservation commission, uh, but our. Three public hearings that are ongoing will not be on the next planning board meeting agenda.
Yeah, what, what I don't think is productive for plan, our planning board hours, as it's ten thirty and we're still talking, right? Is, is having a, a free-for-all. Though that's great for a retreat, even then it's not great, right? It's, it's like having a meeting without an agenda. If we have something in front of us that someone has already looked at, someone has already put in good ideas, someone already knows the pluses and minuses and can present it to the board. And we have an informed discussion about it. To me, that's the best use of all of our time, right? Instead of always hashing stuff out from the beginning and planning board, we just don't. You know, I, I don't want to sit here for four hours every time we meet, no matter how loaded our agenda is, right? It's not normal. So um, I would rather some of the homework be done in advance so that we respect the time of everyone on the board.
So Peter, are you seeing there is?
And I think I got some more direction. So if I work with Ann, I don't know if we, for the twenty-third, I think the stuff I have is well. Passed ready, in, integrating timelines probably reason.
Is well passed ready?
Um, I mean, I had a bunch of options. I, like I said, I, I wanted to edit. Planning board rules for Ashland to add it. I do not believe we have them. So that's where it's, it's a bigger conversation, but it can be a smaller conversation. Could we put this on the website? Let's discuss it. Yeah, so I'll update that and see the timeline and hopefully we can be on the agenda for the twenty-third of that.
Yeah, so I think if there's a, a timeline that Anna has started, it's, it's kind of something that already exists, really. I mean, it's in the bylaws, so. So Peter has a, a knowledge of the steps that have to be taken, right? So if some of this language is added in, I mean, Peter's gonna have to check it and say, yep, this is consistent with our bylaws. Then we can have the discussion about that document of, I assume this is about how to explain to the public, how to explain to. Developers what our process is. That's what we're talking about, right? About, about these, about understanding a timeline.
I think we're talking about both things. I think we're talking about a timeline and adding Kate's language about. Encouraging a pre-application conference.
Right.
And putting it all in one piece of paper. So you might have potential pre-application conference early on in this timeline, right? Up to you, applicant, you're welcome. Um, so we can give it a shot. It's not gonna be pretty, but I can, you know, we can give it a try together and bring it forward. Kate in the next meeting. And that's fine. I, I, I have to kind of say that I do appreciate when planning board members are bringing ideas in whatever form to us. And sometimes we get things last minute because Pete is busy and that's the way, you know, I appreciate how busy he is. So I think we're all trying to do our best.
No, absolutely. It's just that there's always another meeting, you know, it's, it's, doesn't have to be done this meeting. There's another one. And it's not uh, it, it's not causing any catastrophe if it waits one more meeting. So.
And Kate and Anna, I'm happy to, you know, outside of this, but inside of work hours, I'm happy to set up a thirty-minute call.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, I, I mean, one of the things I was gonna suggest is we have a new assistant town planner and. Who's been listening to us this entire time. And if there's, if there's permission from Tricia, I would love to hear more from, is it Alvaro? Am I pronouncing your name right?
Alvaro.
Alvaro. I would love to hear more from you as to kind of your special interests, what brought you to Ashland. If there's space and time for that, Tricia, if that's appropriate.
Well, it, it, it's really about the board, but it um. I will say that I will give Alvaro a couple of minutes to, to do that and then we will adjourn for the night. Okay? Alvaro, you have the stage.
Thank you. Uh, no, I, I actually been very happy to listen. It's very interesting to me, actually, like seeing the different points of views. Um, and I came into Ashland because, like, I honestly, I'm a very young professional. I just finished. Uh, school, I studied geography and community in developed, community and urban planning, um, in Clark. And so I was working with the city of Worcester in a lot of community planning, so running programs. Um, that focus a lot of in health prevention specifically for youth. Um, and so when I was looking for a different like job opportunity, I was just trying to find a place that will foster me and let me. Grow into become a better, more um, verse planner. And that when I came into Ashland, I had my interview with Peter and. Personally, I was able to like, you know, fall here and he's um, being acting as my mentor and kind of like fostering that is space for me to grow into the role.
What'd you think of your first uh planning board meeting?
I think it's very interesting. Um, I, I personally like, like this agreement. Um, because I think, you know, like that is the only way that you can develop um, better ideas, like come to like a better. Way of creating. I do think that, you know, housing and affordable housing is one of the things that is definitely like very big. Uh, especially Massachusetts, which is like a, a smaller state, you know, you have to like be very thoughtful on the way that you use the land. Um, and very also thoughtful about the communities that you're impacting in the way. So, yeah, it's been quite interesting, honestly.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely. All right, and we're glad uh Peter now has some backup again.
Well said, Alvaro. Good job.
Because he called you a mentor now?
Hey, it's big words. That's a lot of, that's a big word, Deepa. It's a lot of responsibility.
It is.
You know, Emma was my mentor, as everyone knows.
That's probably true.
She ran the, everyone know who, who was in control of that relationship. Uh, no, uh, just quick note, and I know Tricia, you said you want, you know, we're gonna close this, but. Um, our meeting on the twenty-third obviously will be virtual. Um, and we are waiting for the state law to hopefully extend, so we can meet virtual. Um, as, as I said at the last meeting, that was wrapped into uh Governor, Governor Healy's bill, uh, budget bill. So I think it will be, it's just a matter of time, but in April, at this point, we'll be going back to meeting in person. Um, but as soon as I get additional information, I will let everybody know as soon as possible.
But, but that's just, just um. I mean, who, who, I mean, we would be doing, I assume, hybrid meetings like the select board does.
Yeah.
But who here, if we were having a hybrid meeting, would be interested in. Meeting in, in person in the, in the select boardroom.
I mean, I have to say, I, I would be. I, I, I think that there is a benefit to being in person. I think we'll get more efficient. It will force us to be shorter, in my opinion, and there is some kind of. Uh. Si- like a, there's an energy to being in person that I think is helpful to the public.
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying, if, if, we'll still have it be hybrid.
But, 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 but the caveat that, that Anna put there is, I agree with. It, it, it has to be organized. We cannot have four-hour meetings in person all the time. And we have to just reduce the comments to one comment, not a circular conversation about the same thing. Repeated five times, because and, and I, I've seen the select board meetings, they, they go to the point and then move on, and that's how they keep it going. I'll be fine with that.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, I. The meeting length since we went online hybrid was definitely longer than when we met in person. So, um, so I agree. I hope that it would make our meetings more efficient. That would be the goal. One of many goals. So um, I mean, so Peter, can we, can we look at having our next meeting hybrid? March twenty-third, or is that two? Or with the committee, wanna, hey, let's start it in April. Let's go hybrid in April, no matter what the, no matter what the state does. Sorry?
I'm just curious that I thought in March twenty-third, Peter said there are no projects. Sounds like it's gonna be absolutely administrative conversations. So is, my question would be, forgive my ignorance here, but is it required to have that meeting? Go on that schedule because you don't have projects right now? So is there time that we could make up that meeting that I'm assuming there's a meeting count for the year, for the calendar year that we have to hold? But is there a reason why we should have a meeting when we don't have projects?
I, I think it's just when we fill in deeper, like on March twenty-third, we have conservation commission. Or, and we had talked about, we can talk about the um, pre-application conference. So almost some of the things we become are things that we would cover in a retreat, except that we don't need to have the retreat, right? Because one of the reasons we had the retreat is because we could never have time to talk about anything else in a meeting, because we were always too busy.
Yeah.
Um, but as our schedule opens up. To me, we don't have to have the extra retreats. We can, we're able to, which are public meetings anyway. We're just able to talk about those in our regular meetings.
Okay. I mean, I'll, I'll make a suggestion, which is what, what, you know, one of the things that we may want to do if we're fully in control, because there's no, there's no. Formal public hearings on issues of a project is we can, on our agenda, we can create some timeframes of. Trying to limit discussion to fifteen, twenty minutes a topic or whatever, and we can be much more efficient that way, just to thought. If we're fully in control.
Yeah.
Our own destiny.
We can try that. Like, I know our, the other board meetings, we actually put time to every topic. Um, and you may not be exact that second, but at least it helps you.
Absolutely.
Kind of, we could try that. And if it's not a big deal, we should try that, because it's just not healthy to have four-hour meeting every Thursday nights.
And I'm not suggesting that for the applicant, regular public hearings, because those can get very technical. And I think limiting those for tw- to twenty minutes is not gonna be fair. I'm talking about our own meetings where we don't have projects, like the next one. Why not create our own timeframes?
I think for all meetings, we should do it. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, we should probably try it, because I, I'm, I'm already dreading the April thirteenth one. It sounds like we are gonna have. Large projects again. It sounds like a nice, long, four-and-a-half-hour meeting for sure.
But I think you're, I think you're right, though. You could put hour, 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 and the hour hit that hour, we're done. We're moving on.
I don't even know if we need a full hour, because I think if, when we, if we post as an hour, that gives the applicant a sense their presentation has no limit.
All right, well, let's, let's not go far into it discussing it overly in this meeting. So now we're dragging this meeting on. So can we, can we, do you want to look at meeting in person on our next meeting, March thirteenth, it'd be hybrid?
Twenty-third, you mean?
What?
Twenty-third, right?
Sorry, twenty-third, yeah. Twenty-third hybrid?
Sure.
Sure.
I just gotta set it up. Uh, I, I, I have to prep myself, but I'm happy to do that. And obviously, we're gonna have to reach out to WACA. Uh, to let them know as well, because uh, they are an important piece and during the, the select board meetings, they are present. Uh, obviously, they're in the studio, but they would have to re-update their scheduling to be in town hall.
Okay. Well, Peter, why don't you and I talk about that logistically?
We'll take care of the logistics. Let's, let's keep the logistics offline, uh, and, and obviously, uh, more information's coming.
If it's too crazy for March, we'll start in April. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. If there's nothing else, it's, it's ten forty-one. And I will make a motion to adjourn at ten forty-one.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote?
Deepa Venkata.
Anna Tassanitsky, I.
Marcelo, I.
Catherine Jersey, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So that is it. We will see you in two weeks, live or online.
All right, thank you, Alvaro. Have a great night, everybody. Bye.